Okay, um, let's call the order, um, city council meeting for April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, we will start with the roll call vote, starting from Councilman Thielen.
Jason Thielen, present.
Greg Gordon, present.
Kelly Law, present.
Jessica Smeon, present.
Lon Lot, present.
We will start with a prayer from Jessica Smeon, followed by a pledge from Councilman Lot.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful spring day. We're grateful for this time we have to focus on our community. We're thankful, Father, for the many freedoms we enjoy, and we ask that thou will help and guide us this day as we work to make good decisions and a good plan for our city. Help us all to, um, work together, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Did you say? So Lon and Mom, I always had a hard time. Law and Lot, I always had a hard time.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we will go directly into our work session with the discussion on the twenty twenty-four budget.
All right, so we provided a list of bullet points in the packet that we could discuss tonight, and then at the very end, uh, kind of a catch-all for other things that you wanted to discuss related to the budget. Um, I'll be honest with you, there's a few things that I wanted to have polished up by tonight, but I've been out dealing with some flood stuff, so, um, that didn't happen, so. Uh, the first thing here is, uh, the increase in our public safety district. We have a board meeting tomorrow morning where the tentative budget, uh, for Lone Peak, uh, will be adopted in some manner. Um, some, some number had to go in the packet, so this reflects the numbers that went in that packet, um, for them. Um, so primarily, this is, uh, reflects an increase in, in wages and benefits, and, and then there's some other equipment and, and some things as well. And chiefs, if I miss anything, feel free to jump in. Um, so on the police side, um, wh- what's currently in there is, uh, about an eighty-four thousand, about eighty-five thousand dollar increase, um, about six point one percent. That's Alpine's portion. Uh, fire, about just over sixty-one thousand. Uh, I think I might have got that percentage wrong in there. I don't think they're exactly the same. The administration looks really heavy on the increase, but we discussed that previously, and the council approved the new, uh, structure with the Highland staff taking care of, of that role.
Shane, but does that include, um, did, did that pre-include an increase for, for this year? I mean, there was the adjustment in the allocation and the split and so on, but is there?
Yeah, it, it anticipates an increase for the Highland staff members that are a percentage of their time is allocated.
But also, uh, the, uh, and the, for this coming year.
Uh-huh, yep, mhm, both of them. Um, so those, those numbers could change. Um, uh, and I can't remember if we told you, but, uh, an HR person, a full-time HR person was hired to be split between Lone Peak and Highland City down there, and, and she is on board now. Um, let's see, so it's a little bit tough to have this discussion until after the board meeting tomorrow, but I, I wanted to bring to you what's, what's in that packet, so I think maybe, uh, next time we can talk more about that, and we'll know where that tentative budget ended up. Um, uh, okay, we haven't really determined our, what we're proposing for our wage increases. I mean, numbers have been floating around, but, um, the mayor and I have talked a little bit. So we'll get some information to you on that. I, the numbers I provided last time, the last budget discussion, it was as of January twenty-three, what the percent inflation was. This is the full year of twenty twenty-two, as listed on the CPI reports. Uh, so the West had eight percent, Mountain's nine point three. Um, and I, I can tell you right now, that's not what I'm proposing, uh, not that high, so. Um, for our, our health insurance, we got those rates since our last meeting. Uh, our medical increase is three point nine percent, and dental was, uh, no change. Uh, our garbage increase is based on the CP, uh, CPI West Urban Index by our contract. Uh, that is six point three percent. Um, and then, uh, we've been working through, uh, between Ryan and I, the rates, and I don't know, do we have any info?
Yeah, so, yeah, so just some preliminary stuff. Right now, they're looking at increasing for the, for your garbage and your recycling. So with the proposed, uh, numbers they gave us, it would be about a forty percent increase for your first garbage container, twenty for your second, and then for, um, if you have one recycling, uh, container or two, it's about forty-one cents increase on both those.
You said forty percent, you meant forties.
Yeah, forty cents, sorry. Yeah, it's forty percent. They really don't want you to, nope, sorry, they really don't want you to recycle anymore, so. No, it's forty cents, so. Yep, so forty for your first, for your garbage, uh, twenty, and this is an increase of what they had before. Uh, twenty for your second, forty-one for your recycling container, and then another forty-one for a second container there. So we're looking at, uh, numbers that we can propose that would, uh, kind of offset those and kind of help us stay in the positive on that. I've got the spreadsheet. Shane created it, so you know it's a good one, but we've got the spreadsheet that, um, kind of walks through some of this stuff. We'd be happy to go over it if anyone really wants to get in the weeds on their garbage containers.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it in more detail, too, when we sit down and show you everything.
So, so back to the wage increases. Did we, I thought we addressed and made those adjustments last year for when we'd had, um, truth in taxation, and we looked at projecting and what we would need to do to make sure that we didn't just do these little incrementals, that we actually kind of captured, uh, you know, those increases at that time.
On the, on the public safety stuff, or just in general, everything?
Just in general, on the wage, where it says CPI West. So are wage increases related to the safety district? You have another bullet point where it says wage increases, or is that about Alpine's staff?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, both, so, um, but we, we, we do not anticipate a tax increase, so we're working everything in the direction of not having one, if that answers
Okay.
your question. And by the time we get to our, uh, tentative budget next month, um, we'll have all these details fleshed out for you, so. Um, let's see. Um, one of our big projects in our budget this year is the Grove Drive realignment, and the plans aren't quite finished, to the point that it can be bid out, which is not really a bad thing, because with the high runoff, and I anticipate it being a long runoff, they won't be able to do some of the work anyway. When it starts to die off, they may be able to put in a temporary culvert or something, um, to work around it, but right, to start it right in the middle of the high runoff would probably not be a wise thing to do. So we'll plan for that in our budget and keep the money that was allocated for it and just roll it into the next year's budget.
Did we ever send anything over to the county, to Rob Moore, um, on like prelimi- preliminary plans or costs or anything, so they have an idea or understanding of the cost for that project?
It, it's part of the Grove, or the conservation discussion that we had, we did send them over the, I think it was just the engineering plans, it was a couple months ago.
And the cost, and the associated cost for it?
Yeah.
Did we ever hear back from them?
No. So there's really three things going on. We've got the Box Elder South Annexation, we've got the Conservation Easement, and then this discussion of a contribution from the county, um, and they're all related in some way. Um, just last Friday, uh, Steve sent, uh, a draft of the Conservation Easement to Rob Moore at the county, and so now we anticipate that hopefully these things can start coming together, so.
Is that gonna be a problem with that grant? Has a twenty-four month timeline?
We're only like a year into it, right?
Right, so do you, you know, anticipate?
I think we'll be okay, yeah. Yeah, I think we'll be okay.
So does that work happen in the fall, then, this year?
No, I, I think, uh,
In the summer?
this summer.
Okay, as it's lost?
Be complete by fall, yeah, yep.
But spanning two budget years?
Yes, mhm. Yep, and we can work that. Um, let's see, uh, grants, um, so we applied for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, uh, MAG through the C, the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program. Uh, we did the interview, I think, the day before our last council meeting. Uh, the following week, we heard that they awarded us, uh, a fifty thousand dollar grant. Um, our project, maybe to its detriment, was very scalable. So, you know, instead of doing fifty ramps, we could do twenty very easily. And we kind of sold that, because we wanted to make sure we got something and get, kind of build a reputation with them, I guess, so it worked and it didn't, we got fifty instead of a hundred and fifty. But it's fifty thousand.
We got something where we don't have that track record. I know they do have preferential treatment for people that already have a track record of, um, doing one, they say they will. So we figure we'll do whatever that cost is, and with our contribution, and then we'll just go back next year again.
So would you start with like our collector roads? Like, is that how you would identify that?
Shane's got a plan, Shane and Jed, so.
So we were focusing around, like, our major parks, like from Creekside Park through Legacy Burgess and then the schools. So we'll pick whichever area needs it the worst and, and work that area first. Um, but in the scoring matrix, it says right in there, do you have project history with the CDBG program, and we couldn't get any points for it, because we don't, we didn't have any history, so.
So this is good, it's a good entryway, and then, you know, we'll go back for it every year, and because the project is scalable, it's, you know, it's taking time, but it's costing us a lot less than it would for us to do it altogether.
And that's, we picked this project that's very straightforward to, to help with that, and hopefully get something to get us off on the right foot with them. Um, so, uh, we've got the Poppy Grant to finish up, that should be during this budget year. Um, and then the Trail Grant, the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Grant, that's related to the Grove Drive realignment project. Uh, the other grant we had during this year was the Fire Station Exhaust System, and we just got our portion of the invoice for that. It was like six grand, sixty-three hundred and some change. Um, and then we applied for another.
We thought about it. What, once we have our five oh one C three functioning, we can then go for that next year. We just needed our own legal vehicle to do that.
Okay, um, so then the council approved this, uh, public safe, public safety impact fee on the fireside, um, to do that analysis. We're having our kickoff meeting, I think, Thursday for that, um, so that we can get started there, and I've been in conversation with the architect as well. Try to get that moving. Um, the next item on here, really, that I think needs to be a major focus this year is our streets, and we'll probably try to do more than the seven hundred thousand. Um, Westfield Road needs to be addressed, Grove Drive, Main Street, One Hundred South, those are for sure roads. And then others that were already planned for last fall that will be done this spring, um, are not included in that list, so. Uh, I think it'll go a long ways with our citizens after the rough winter and the condition those roads are in, especially Grove Drive, and if we let Main Street go another year, it could look like Grove Drive. And we don't want that.
No.
So that will be a major focus for us. We've discussed Grove Drive already. I mentioned last time we discussed the budget about with that Cherry Point subdivision, which will be on the next council agenda. Uh, coming in and doing improvements there, that, you know, we might start considering from that, the old ninety-degree bend going south and approving that section of the road. Um, prior to doing that, uh, we've talked with Lehigh City, they're, they want to replace their water line before we do uh, our road project, which we'd rather have them replace it ahead of us, so we'd want to give them notice and.
Are we requiring Cherry Point to lay conduit for broadband?
Uh, it's not in our standards yet. Jed's working on that. He keeps getting diverted on other things, but.
I think we need to have a conversation with them, that they really need to do that.
I, my guess is they're going to want to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure it gets done.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, let's see. Yeah, that's, that stretch of road's gonna need something done, and it's, it's kind of like Canyon Crest. There's work that could be done, the stuff that bugs me on it right now, but we're like four years away from a major project on that road, and I hate to go spend a bunch of money down there to have it torn up, you know, four years later, so we'll probably just get by on Canyon Crest and do the minimum we have to to make it a good road. It's not horrible, but it, it could be better. Um, and that, that kind of relates a little bit to the next few items on water. Um, in our capital facilities plans, we have some, some new water lines that are listed in there. Uh, like one of them, uh, part of the alignment goes down Canyon Crest Road, and so it's a bigger line, it's gonna be, it's gonna cost some money, um, but we need to be, have that done if we're going to do it ahead of the street project. So that's where I put in here the notes about potentially bonding within the next, say, year or two, to get some of these projects done and, and, uh, not tear up new streets. Some other side things going on that could affect that. Uh, Central Utah Water Conservancy District has hired, not sure the name of his company, or if he works for them, or if he owns it, I'm not sure, but Jeff Davis, that's on our planning commission. We had a meeting with him, um, yesterday afternoon, and they've hired him to do some more studies this spring. Uh, I'm gonna have to turn that air conditioner on. Is, is it hot for anybody else? With the, the high runoff that we're going to have, they've hired him to do a study to see how, to take measurements in, uh, our creeks and even some of our ditches, and in some other cities, too, and then monitor the level of the water in our wells to see how the runoff affects, or if it does affect how the lev- the water level in our wells, which will be really good information for down the road. Because they're gonna spend a lot of money building a big pipeline through Alpine, if everything works out, to put water in Dry Creek to recharge our seocry. And so they want to see if it really is beneficial. There's been other studies done, but we haven't had a runoff year like this, so. Um, we're cooperating with them to give them all the information that could be beneficial, uh, for their study. Um, let's see. Projects that will need further discussion are Four Hundred West Boosters, that will kind of help our west side, and even up on Lakeview Drive, and some of the areas that have struggled with water pressure. Uh, the new well we've discussed, that one will, that one will need some more discussion. I mentioned the re-roofing of the filter building, that we're, uh, trying to get some prices pulled together for that. And then again, the, the potential bonding. Um, for equipment, uh, we need to replace a dump truck, and as we talked about it, uh, with our public work staff, uh, we took an old, an older dump truck that we had, probably, I don't know what year that truck is, it might be like in twenty thirteen. We had it for a few years, and then we converted it to a hook lift, so we have these bins, which have been very handy this year, and other, every year, really, but this year in particular, uh, working with the wards to, you know, clean up the channels, getting ready for all the runoff and everything, because we can, we'll in there, dump these bins off on a Friday, they do their project on a Saturday, we go pick them up Monday, and haul the, the stuff to the landfill. Um, so that truck won't last forever. Um, we think, uh, adding a second hook lift to our fleet would be very beneficial and give us a lot of flexibility. Um, so, and we can use the same bins we have, we'd probably add a couple. They kind of get banged up and that, but, uh, we wouldn't even necessarily have to do that in this budget year, but that's probably a, Landon's getting prices right now, he's been working on it for probably a month. It's probably about a two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, so if it was a dump, a straight dump truck, it might be, I'd guess, one fifty or sixty. So it's, it's a little bit more, but it's more flexible for everything that we do. Um, and then we're still looking, we might need, uh, to replace a pickup truck. Um, okay, the park tax, we discussed at the last meeting, and we will discuss it in our, uh, action items tonight. We have a resolution to, uh, take the first step in that process. Um, we discussed grants already, I have that on there twice. Uh, when we talked before, we also discussed the library reimbursement program we have, and that some citizens have asked for some additional reimbursement. So we pulled together all the costs that we have for what, the last couple, two or three years? Three years on reimbursements, and then what the Bookmobile costs us. Uh, Ryan's pulled that together, so he'll kind of discuss that here and show you the numbers.
Yeah, so like Shane was saying, we've got some requests to, to up that fee, um, on the second page here. So these are just some of the numbers that we've got, how many app, or how many requests we get for these reimbursements. Um, we did last year twenty-one, we skipped twenty-twenty because of COVID, everything shut down, um, and so we just went from, uh, twenty nineteen. We did have the numbers on twenty-twenty on there, if you're interested, but we only had about ninety-five requests, uh, for reimbursements on those, so. Uh, last year, we had a two hundred and fifty-one, year before that, two fifty-seven, and in twenty nineteen, we had two seventy-three.
If we had a twenty-year bond for a library, how much would that cost per household?
That's a great question. I don't know.
I think it'd be way more than what we're paying right now.
Right?
Yeah.
So I feel like if we can get that number and kind of weigh it, and kind of put it that way to the residents, you know, if you want a library, this is what the actual cost is.
And I don't, I don't know that anyone's really been saying, hey, we need a library, but they're just asking if we can.
Oh, no, I'm getting emails, we need a library.
Okay, we haven't here, at least I haven't.
They're like, you're doing a great job, but you know what would be awesome?
Yeah.
A rec center and a library. That's what I'm getting.
So with these, you can see we kind of messed with some of the possible, uh, if we did increase those, what those would, would end up being. We did, it ended up being about two hundred and sixty was our average for the last couple of years, so. Most of the, the majority of our reimbursements, uh, go to Highlander, American Fork, those libraries. Um, so you can kind of see what, what everyone else is charging, um, with those, and then what other cities that are, do these reimbursements are doing as well. And then if you go down a more, we, we included some information about the Bookmobile. Um, I talked to, his name's Sean Bliss, he's the librarian, one of them, I think he's the head, the head librarian for them, but uh, he said Alpine and Vineyard are the two busiest stops that he has. Um, to, to put that kind of in perspective, though, a lot of the stops he has are, uh, don't have the, the draw or the, the population that we have. So keep that in consideration, but he did say his numbers are going up. Uh, they're always super busy when they come here. They come every other week. Um, they're here from ten thirty until, they, they say they get to their third place at three thirty, so we just figured they'd probably be there for about an hour, two hours, but, um, and, and as part of that, we're paying our last agreement, thirteen thousand five hundred ninety-six, uh, for those services to come here, too, so.
Good question. They say that, you know, they're at eighty percent capacity. Do you know what capacity is in the Bookmobile? It's kind of small.
How many people they can fit in there?
Yeah.
I don't know what the number is that they can fit in there. He just thought.
He means pre-pandemic levels.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he says they keep seeing it going up. The numbers he gave us for the summer months, though, were, were with those four H STEM programs they did. Um, so he thought the numbers were a little high on those, but, uh, he, he guessed probably ninety to a hundred would be more accurate in the summer months, if they didn't have those STEM programs associated with it, too.
Can you calculate how much per person we would have done, paid, based on the thirteen five ninety-six and the, and the, uh, can you?
Uh-huh, yeah, we can, we can add that. I can't off the top of my head, but.
It's been interesting, over the course of time I've sit on the council, the Bookmobile thing, discussing how much we would pay, spend every year on that versus, versus the, the reimbursement aspect, and whether we should take that money, really, for the Bookmobile, and go ahead and then, and put that towards the reimbursements, and see if, I know we have quite a few people using the Bookmobile, but I've always tried to see what that good, that balance is of taking.
Can you scroll up just a little?
Fourteen thousand dollars, and, and what its return on investment is for how many people versus those who are using a library card, and if those who are using a library, or using the Bookmobile would also get a reimbursement for a library card, I would be interested in that as well.
Yeah, and, and of course, they're kind of additive experiences, though, right? I mean, there, there probably isn't a whole lot of overlap here, but there's people that go down the street and just do that. Some people may use Highland Library for the events as well, and.
Yeah, I think I'd rather see a full reimbursement to Highland Library, and, and maybe not put those resources to the Bookmobile, because maybe the Bookmobile people would just go to Highland.
Well, may, maybe. We talked about that years ago, and really got some pushback from some of those Bookmobile people. But again, who are they, and?
So I personally feel like a lot of the Bookmobile people are using remote, um, just the eBooks that you can download.
Yeah, so I'm signed up.
Yeah, I don't know if they're physically going and, you know, going into the Bookmobile, but it's the added resources. I don't know if Highland has that ability to be able to, um, go to the, you know, because I think the Bookmobile is connected to also the Salt Lake Public Library. Their resources for, um, online books, and so you just have a wider selection, but maybe Highland City also offers that.
Maybe that's what we need to find out, does Highland also, because then we're just double making something that is.
The same.
And, and I feel like
It's accessible.
If we could fully refund the seventy dollars, if we removed the thirteen thousand, we'd still be a positive.
I don't feel like we need to ever fully refund.
Do Highland citizens pay zero dollars to get a library?
Well, they pay taxes, you know, they have a bond that they're paying.
Yeah, if you're a resident, you don't pay an extra, yeah.
You can just go get a library card.
Yeah.
That's what they're paying. That's why it's always free to those residents, because you're paying in some way.
They're paying it.
Yes.
They're probably paying like five hundred bucks.
No, they're paying a lot. That's why I was asking what the cost is per household for a twenty-year bond for a library, or, you know, anything equivalent.
And for those, for the other lib- And for those, for the other libraries reimbursement program, you get one per household. With the bookmobile, anyone in your family can have a, a card, I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but I don't know why everyone would need their own card at the, at the, you know, libraries either, but.
And, and maybe it's not our concern, but when Ryan, he relayed to me that when he called the bookmobile, uh, this, I can't remember the guy's name. That he was concerned that we were talking about pulling out, he was wondering if that was a reason, because it, as I understood it, it takes everybody that's involved to make it work. Just so you have that.
I think Alpine was like their original city too, in the, in the county.
Is that, did I portray that accurately?
Yeah, yeah.
I've always felt like it's a pretty cheap library option for the city, we're not maintaining a building, we don't have the replacement cost of the building, we don't have to staff it and, and everything. But, um, we can, we can look at it from whatever direction you'd like us to.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a, uh, a no-go for me, I'm just saying I'd like to see that, those numbers. Corresponding with library per person, bookmobile per person and see if we're actually saving money on the bookmobile. We just don't know, we just got that lump sum and then an approximate.
I think Ryan has it there.
Yeah, so I just, and again, I'm not a math, Shane can check, engineers can check my math here, but. Uh, thirteen thousand five ninety-six is what we're paying the last one, they said we had about two hundred and eighty residents. That, that had access to that, the base was about three fifty, but they said two eighty, so I'm getting about forty-eight five. That we're paying for that, somebody check my math please, but. Yeah, I think.
I'm just wondering though, like, how many of those are active participants, you know, you said you're registered, do you?
Yeah, I'm registered to the Utah County Library, which is through the.
Bookmobile, have you ever used their services?
Yeah.
You do?
I do, I do, and so if it's as part of the package then.
I'm registered because they came through and did the process and I think I, you know, did it like the first time and then I was waiting for a book and then forgot and I think I went and bought it. You know, cause I was tired of waiting, I have not been back on since then.
And I think, I, I know in the Springville Library with my library card, I get access to that Utah Online.
You do.
Whatever too, so I'm pretty, I'm sure it's pretty common.
Yeah, cause I'm wondering, I mean, if, and maybe I could be totally wrong, I, you know, I don't see. It seems like the people that come in and out there, I don't really see a ton of cars, looks like they had a STEM program going and whatnot. But I know Highland City offers similar stuff going over there and if they have access to the inner libraries for online or eBooks. We might just be, you know, but maybe it's, it gives our residents an option, right, where they don't have to go, that's what they need.
And it's three locations in the city.
Yeah, and I. I mean, if it services a portion of our community that maybe doesn't want to go, I mean, I think for each age group, there's different reasons why I use the library, right? There's the young families who use it for the, you know, reading time and programs like that, and then, you know, you've got the older kids for STEM programs and then you've got, you know, people that are older that, you know, want the convenience of the eBooks and whatnot and streaming services. Yeah, I guess I just don't understand enough about it.
Yeah, but it, but at forty, forty plus bucks, uh, ahead, it's still the same as what we're reimbursing that library card.
It's a difference of eight or nine dollars.
And e- except for, unless someone also gets reimbursed for a library card and they use the bookmobile.
And maybe that's worth checking, you know, maybe in theory you shouldn't be using both.
So maybe one or the other.
And I wonder how much overlap, but maybe that's the point, bookmobile's, you know, almost fifty dollars, maybe that's our reimbursement.
And maybe we need to push the bookmobile more, because then the more we push it, the more per, per take of it.
That's right.
Their cost goes down per head, yeah.
I don't think it's tremendously well-understood, right, you'd have to just sort of know or, you know, get lucky, right? It's, I mean, it's in there, but. At Creekside, I think it's more visible, but it goes right over here, I think, yeah.
Okay, there was, uh, one more item that's not on here that I wanted to discuss, and that's the Alpine Youth Council. So, a few years ago, I think we increased our budget from five to fifty-five hundred, from five thousand to fifty-five hundred. It's never really been super clear and they're asking this question this year. If they get that budget plus, they usually bring in some revenue that comes through the city books each year. There's not really an understanding if they, let's say they bring in fifteen hundred, their budget's fifty-five, do they get to spend seven thousand or do they get to spend, uh? Four thousand? So, that's a question I'm getting right now, I look back over five years and there's not really a trend. Um, I had Bonnie look in the minutes from when that budget went up, uh, it wasn't, there wasn't anything mentioned in there about that. So, I would say it's probably, I mean, right now they're showing very little revenue. It's only showing like a hundred and fifteen dollars, but I, I think there. There's a fee to be part of the group and I, I'm thinking it must take place before June thirtieth and then that revenue comes in.
Right.
Kind of at the end of our fiscal year.
And, and so. A lot of that revenue though goes towards their jerseys and.
So that's what they're asking is that their dues pay for their T-shirts and a, um, they want to do a scholarship. So that they could clearly earmark dues for those two things and then between, again, all the costs increase. The safety district appreciation dinner, that's really gone up there, you know, they do the full water days, they do the Memorial Day celebration, the egg hunt. And so they're looking at it and saying, we really need, we really need that full amount, the fifty-five hundred and then our dues, so.
And on that public safety appreciation, uh, dinner, we do pay outside, so it doesn't a hundred percent come from their budget, we pay for part of it outside of that too. I want, I want to say it's like. Two thousand or around, and we pay.
A part of that.
For quite a bit, probably for the last. Three to four, five, maybe five years, so. Do they, do they give an accounting of what the fifty-five hundred is spent on?
All, all, everything that gets paid comes through our books, so, you know, they'll, usually there's food involved for the kids when they have an activity and Jessica could probably tell us more because.
You know, they have, you know, the big part too is their mentoring and developing sixty, seventy kids.
Yeah.
They have speakers and they have a retreat and they have, again, their water days and. They may get a little bit of money from the water days, from Alpine Days and the Santa Claus and the Santa Letters and, I mean, it's quite a bit of. Community activities that they're funding, you know, and that's just their hard cost, that's not the, you know, the thousands of dollars that's spent.
So you're saying that they should keep the money and use it?
So they, the city should be allocated the budget of fifty-five hundred and then their dues cover T-shirts and their scholarship.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to have it not be additive.
Yeah.
Why do I do a fundraiser if I didn't?
Well, that's what, what's the incentive, but they don't, but they're not doing a fundraiser, it used to be years ago, we used to fundraise, cause we had a Pepsi trailer. And during Alpine Days, especially during the family movie and other things, we used, you know, the kids used to sell popcorn and treats and drinks. I don't know what happened to that Pepsi trailer, apparently it disappeared at some time.
I think it was ran it.
Was it?
But I, that was also before the days of all the food trucks and before there were a lot of booze, wasn't it? Am I remembering that right, Jason?
And so when they did that, it, um, the money disappeared, you know, the money disappeared, right? So there was no more fundraising, the only other, um, source of revenue we had way back when was water days, we used to charge, right? It was like a dollar, a dollar fifty or whatever and we gave them a popsicle and they could play. Um, you know, the water games are free now, you know, to, so it's a service to the community, so we have kind of dried up, so the only thing that. You know, I feel like the scholarship is a good idea, it's not a huge amount or huge sum that they're asking for. I think if they can build that into their, um, into their fees, you know, as long as they understand that that's, cause I think they, um, kind of tell them, you know, this is what your fees go towards. If they kind of understand that, I think it's okay, does, do you agree or Jason, do you have any other thoughts other than that, that they should be able to spend it?
I think, um. My experience lately is that the Alpine Youth Council is getting better and better, I mean. The amount of kids who want to participate in it, they're having to churn people away, they've got great leadership in, as in the youth and the adults, I. When I see a value to the city, you know, I've never seen anyone use the bookmobile in, in Lon, you're the first one, so you're the first one I've seen that actually uses it, so that's great, but. I see the value coming out of this, like, you know, they just put the Easter egg hunt on, which was fantastic, we could have done it without them. There's a number of things, I say anything we can do to help them. We should, so for sure, let them keep the money, heck, I would have been, I'd increase the budget actually.
No.
I know, but they're just, and take a little bit away from the bookmobile.
And, and so maybe, I mean, it's, some of these things get hard to track, like I said, we spend a little bit of time, trying to figure it out, how it had been done and there wasn't a pattern, but maybe. Maybe we could pass a resolution in support of the youth council and, and specify that the, the council will.
Allocate that amount.
Allocate a budget amount, we don't necessarily have to put the amount in the resolution, but then they would be able to spend the revenue that they generate as well. And then it's in writing and whoever down the road can find that easily.
Okay.
And it's clear to the leaders.
So that when they're looking at their forward planning, cause that's what they're trying to.
Agreed.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great idea, let's proceed with that.
All right, um, then, uh, I know Jessica's reached out to me, uh, on a few items related to the budget and if anyone else has anything, this would be a great time to spend some time to discuss it. And we kind of plan for an hour, if we go longer than that, that's fine too, cause we don't have a huge agenda here.
Like to get out early.
Yeah, let's get out early. The only, the only thing Shane is like, we have, we do have a lot of volunteers and stuff like that for the parks and the trails and all that, but. Some sort of dedicated. City person that looks, that's maybe more dedicated to those things and like.
Like Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, like that.
Uh, an employee budget line item.
Yeah.
And, and we have had a placeholder in the budget for a twenty-hour-a-week position to do something like that, it's never really been defined and we haven't put it into place. Um, but that, we had that and then we had a part-time, uh, slot for an HR person that we haven't filled either. Uh, we kind of, uh. When we switched some things around and hired Ryan, I kind of anticipated that some of that, uh, the increase could come from that area. And Ryan's been great.
So we should slash Ryan salaries.
Ryan can just take, Ryan can just do Parks and Rec too.
But. But I, I think, I think we could spend some time, uh, and. Put together some bullet points of what we'd want that, uh, person or that position to do and then take it from there, so. But I think probably what I'm hearing right now is keep that placeholder in the budget and maybe work towards filling it.
And then just, I just had a couple other comments, just overall on this stuff, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and I know for the. Police and fire and those things where these numbers aren't. Um, written in stone yet because you're meeting tomorrow, but just in general with the economy and. You know, people getting laid off and all those kinds of things, you know, we should do our best to. Keep increases to a minimum, that's the thing I, with Jessica, like last year, we did this huge. Thing, um, to increase all those. Salaries for those people that, you know, that serve us so well, so just, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not necess, I've never personally received a. Cost of living adjustment in my entire life, maybe that's because I'm an entrepreneur, like I just gotta like. Get, get what I can earn.
Yeah.
But I don't know that in this economy with people getting laid off, with recessions looming and dollars being devalued. It's gonna be really hard to keep doing that, you know, over and over again and to keep up with that, we're gonna have to. Find other ways, you know, just like personally. To maybe not have the full increases. Um, and then just, the only other thing on here is. In, in, in line with that, like, like a new well. I don't know how much that is, but.
Substantial amount of money.
Yeah, we got a lot of runoff, not necessarily up for a new well right now. Stuff like that, so, I just say.
Carter's laughing, but I tend to agree with Kelly on that as well, meaning we're gonna have a lot more expenses with our roads, we need to fix our roads. If I was to push something off, it would be that and focus, I mean, what used to be green on our map is now red all over the place. So I think that's, I actually agree with what Kelly was saying there.
And just a couple of comments on that, uh, one, they're really two different pots of money. And so we adopt our, our rates, our utility rates based on our capital facilities plan that was also adopted. And so they all kind of go hand in hand, so our rate structure anticipates us doing the improvements that are in our plan. You, you see how they kind of all tie together? So, so drilling a well or doing a water project doesn't impact. The roads, they're, they're totally separate funds.
Other things, other projects out there to compare that with, are those funds just sitting there and we have to spend them or they're just gonna just sit?
Um, well, and, and the second part of that, the second thought is, and it's, I think it might lead to this, um. Like, we gotta make sure we plan for the future, even though we're having a big water year this year, if you've listened to the news over the last week. They still consider us in, I can't remember if it's which category, but we're still in a drought. It, it might have even been, I can't remember if the wording was substantial or severe, but we, it hasn't, it hasn't proved. But they're saying we're not like totally out of the woods on, on that issue, so. I mean, my concern is, we've got these lots in the city that are approved, homes are being built on them. Slower than Saratoga Springs or other, other places. But we have no control over the snowpack and so if we have another really bad year like last year. For example, Dry Creek, and I, I was gonna send an email out today so you'd have access to this, but. Dry Creek, the flow peaked last year at sixteen CFS at three hundred north, there by the elementary school. So, water just barely got to Dry Creek Sunday and we've already surpassed that sixteen CFS, two, two days into the runoff. So there's like a huge difference in years, but if we get these homes built on these vacant lots, they're gonna expect water and if we can't provide it. I, I feel like we could end up in a bind. But there's some other things swirling like the CUP project that could affect some of our improvements. We might not have to put in as big of a pipe or things could change if that project goes. But that, that part of it probably wouldn't affect the well, so. I mean, I understand the concerns about drilling the well, it is expensive, I mean, it'd be. At probably at least a couple million dollars, so.
And isn't it a secondary, is it secondary for irrigation? So, again, just kind of ranking it in, in that order too, I mean, if it was primary for culinary, it'd definitely be critical. But secondary for irrigation, you're kind of like, maybe everyone will flip their strip, maybe they'll all conserve, like there's things we don't know.
Those, those are other things, exactly, yes. And, and our meter, our metered rates go into effect, uh, here in May and. You know, maybe we'll see a substantial change in usage, you never know.
So what I learned from last year is when we went through our truth and taxation with the different, um, accounts that we have in the city. That, you know, I think what Shane is saying is, you know, we've kind of planned for this, we've collected money for it, so, you know, we have each of those.
Well, hold on, we planned for a well that hasn't been approved by the city council yet?
The well.
So it's in the budget, but, but it hasn't been approved?
It's part of the master plan, so when we did our water rate study, that was all planning to remember and year what? We're gonna be going for a bond for water improvements for the city.
Okay, I remember approving the rates and, and.
Right, and the rate was based on our waters.
But nobody ever put a well approval in front. Nobody ever put a well approval in front of me, ever. They said, well, maybe we could do this, but I'd never approved a well. Never voted for that.
So, so the well was in the capital facilities plan? So if we get that water from.
This is the plan you're talking about, doing the bond?
Yes. Yep. So if we get that, I mean, what the capital facilities plan is saying, if you look at the water, uh, there's water rights and water source capacity. It's saying, we project based on the usage of our citizens right now that we'll need this much source capacity. Whether we get that from a well or if conservation takes over and they cross somewhere, somewhere we'll need that water to supply for the future needs of the city.
Okay, well, I.
And, and in some cases to have some redundancy too.
My, I'll just go back to my original statement. Let's make sure we are very prudent in, in, I don't know, if you're, if you've planned for this and the, and the fees are in place for it, let's save up the money and not do a bond. I don't know. But I'm like, but let's, I think, I think we're in a position right now where we, we should conserve, like you said, plan for the future, like conserve for the future.
Yeah. And.
That's the case.
And there are pros and cons to saving and paying with cash. The con is, the people that are coming from the day four that you pay for it aren't paying for it. And so that's where the bond, if you stretch it out over twenty years or whatever, everybody's paying their share. And so there's, there's a couple of ways. Just some of these projects have a dollar amount, you know, for the project that probably would require a bond.
But I'm wondering if we just need more data, because what if we find out that the fees going in actually creates enough of a, um, you know, people will conserve. And so that changes the projection of what we're gonna need.
Yeah. And it's, it's probably, well, it could be some fees, but if less demand is on the system, maybe instead of a, like, one of these pipes is like a twenty-four inch diameter pipe, which is a big pipe in our irrigation system, maybe it drops back to an eighteen because people conserve. So those are things, it's hard to anticipate what people are going to do. Um, but, uh, time will tell, I guess.
Right. But I feel like what staff is doing is trying to anticipate and plan. And what I'm hearing from you Jess is that, well, let's wait and see. And then what if it gets to the point by then, because our rate fees are, it's gonna take a while for people to adapt and learn, and it could take a couple of years. What if in that meantime, we have a boom in development, it happens, and all of a sudden we realize we're gonna have to start people off, or they're gonna only have to water one day a week, which I'm sure they can get by doing. But I, I appreciate staff being proactive and planning. And, you know, that's their specialty, right? You know, and hopefully without any kind of bias whatsoever. And that, um, I think that, you know, that's what they do for a living. That's what they go to school for to learn about. And they lean on the expertise of outside contractors that we've been working with to help us with these. That, you know, I think we need to pay attention to that, that it's not just based on like, oh, I don't want that because I don't feel like that's necessary. Right. If you're gonna say it's not necessary, then I want evidence. I mean, I want both. I want facts supporting and not supporting on both. Well, and based on that, I think the study that was even done to support the well wasn't even a finalized study. It was just a draft. So we don't really even have all the information. And you can drill a well and the well doesn't produce. So there's a lot of variables, I think, that we can talk about.
That's, so, so just to touch on that point, so the hydrologic study was done, and I've actually had Jeff Davis look at it. And he, he knows the firm that did it and said they did it. They're a very reputable company and, and he didn't disagree with it. So we'd be drilling a large diameter well, which is very expensive. But to make sure that we don't go drill this large diameter well and it doesn't produce what we think it will, what you do first is drill a smaller diameter well, a test well, do some pumping, get the hydrogeologists involved. Then they take that data and say, yes, it matches up with the hydro, uh, the hydrogeology, uh, report that was done. Uh, we believe this is a good candidate. First off, we're not gonna go drill a test well, because it's gonna be expensive too, without having a study to back it up and say, yes, we believe this is a good site. So there's some kind of progression steps you take to kind of protect your investment. So that's how that.
And I would say, so just, I agree, we just need to be educated a little more, but I wouldn't assume that this is going to be approved in the budget. Is all I'm, I think is what I'm hearing. We still need to be educated, but that's what I'm hearing.
Okay. And I mean, the other side of it is if we're, if our rates are charging for our improvements on our plan, but we're not doing them, we need to drop our rates. And we have to be willing, if we have to go a summer that says you can only water two days a week because we, we have a source down and we don't have redundancy in our system, we have to be willing to, to make those calls and, uh, you see what I'm saying? Yeah. And we can't afford to have redundancy in everything. Like our storm drain pipes are typically sized for a ten-year storm. It'd be awesome to have them all be able to accept a hundred year, even a fifty-year storm, but we can't afford it. And so we build a ten-year event that takes us, design, takes care of most events, and then the streets kind of take care of everything else. So. Okay. Um, anyone else have?
I, I just wondered if we wanted to, somewhere in the budget, um, we had met earlier this year with, um, outside consultant that writes, um, grants. And, and other cities have shown that that can be pretty, you know, it's, it's money well spent, depending on what the grant they're going for. So I didn't know if we wanted to include, um, we may or may not use it, but at least the ability to hire an outside consultant, um, to write some grants. And I'm talking about, you know, these are for two million dollar grants. So you've spent thirty thousand and you can be awarded, you know, a one million dollar grant. So it looks like it's money well spent. But do we need to have that as part of the budget, even if we don't use it? Or?
I mean, if we, there's two ways you can do it. You can budget for the possibility, or if that comes along, you can amend the budget if, if the money's not there somewhere else.
Okay.
So two approaches, I guess.
And that goes to the email. I sent it out to everyone. It's just, again, one of these larger grants that you have to be really forward looking. But we could do some pretty great things in our parks. And we would need to be talking about it now and not planning for this fiscal year, but planning for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. So that was more just getting the information out there and seeing if it would be something, you know, we can do, um, we could upgrade our water park, we could upgrade Creekside Park. We could do some stuff and get quite a bit of funding. The other one was, do we want to put any money in the budget for education of the park tax? Was that something that was important?
Yeah, and can we?
I think we've already planned that we were gonna do a mailer, right? And then Heidi was gonna push out information on social media. Is there something more than you were thinking? Does that need to be budgeted for mailer? I don't know the costs associated with that. It's not very much. It's, you know, probably less than five thousand per.
Yeah.
So then, and then finally, the, um, just starting to put in to our budget for our community center. I was looking at about three hundred dollars a month to just cover fixed costs as we build out our community center programs. We have quite a few things that are starting to come together, but we are gonna have some costs that need to be covered.
Remind me what a community center you're referring to?
So our long-term goal is to have a community center, but right now we could run kind of a hybrid or a pilot model. And it looks different ways. It could be the senior sitter lun, senior sitter lun, senior citizens luncheon. Maybe we're short a hundred dollars and we need to cover fixed costs. We were gonna do. I thought we're having MAGA cover that. But we don't have that structured and set in place yet. So I'm just saying it's thirty-six hundred dollars to go towards building our community programs. So the lifelong learning. Right. So I'm giving you as far as the senior luncheons till the December or the November luncheon, which they need to know is, if you can get that in place and get the approval from the health department, MAGA's already committed. Mary Luceno said, I will do it. She needs a date, but she needs to have all that approved. So it just needs to be. They'll do two or three lunches a year? They will, but, you know, I'm just saying that I'm sure it'll take time. They need the date as soon as possible, because they need a plan. My suggestion would be you've got, um, you know, Alpine Days, that the state will be taking care of that. They do a special meal, or they do special meals around Thanksgiving and around Christmas. So you could pick one of those. I think that would be a great way. And then go on to the next one. But the Christmas one is like within a week of Christmas. So if you want to do it earlier, it's not gonna be a Christmas meal that they will bring. So I was thinking maybe even something closer to Thanksgiving-ish time, because I think they'll do it a week before, a week after around Thanksgiving. Give her a call, or, you know, the person that Jessica, I think you were talking to, and see, get the details on that, or Heather. Heather. Okay. So still I see, you know, their three hundred dollars could be allocated towards community events such as, you know, the lifelong learning. Um, we want to start doing some exercise activities for our seniors. There's just, you know, I feel like three hundred dollars to go towards some community connections. Right now, I don't know if you guys can help me out with this. We haven't been able to really secure very much entertainment because everyone's wanting at least their costs paid to play for the summer food trucks. And so, you know, there's just kind of basic hard costs. We get thousands and thousands of dollars worth of donation of people giving of their time. But I would say if we could get three hundred dollars allocated in the budget towards community activities, that can look a lot of different ways. I think that would go a long, long way.
Mayor, I have one. Been working on the emergency preparedness and the emergency management thing. We oughta put something in there for upgrading our communications, our radios and, and, uh, in that aspect of, of the emergency management. Uh, Chief, did Chief Beck send you the radios, two radios to, for me tonight? Okay. He was, he must have missed you. He was gonna send it with you. We need to test those two radios that we have to see if they work with our old ones. But, but I think we need to look at, um, that as well. Communications from here, um, uh, to the county, uh, as, as Ryan and I have been at these, um, meetings with them, it would be good to have a, a, a tower here, a ham radio tower on City Hall, so that we can communicate via ham radio to the county. And, uh, in, in that event, that tower, um, when I say tower, it's not real big, it's an antenna, but it's about a three hundred dollar, talking three hundred dollars. It's about a three hundred dollar, uh, ta, uh, mast, um, that, and then we may need to buy a, a five hundred dollar ham radio or whatever.
Then don't you have to have a license for that?
We do have to have a license, and we'll work on that with the emergen, in, within the emergency management, um, group there. Um, hopefully every, every entity that we, um, are working with in all parts of the city will have registered, uh, licensed ham radio operators. And, and again, we hope we never use it, but, uh, but we're, we're preparing for, uh, that possibility that it would need to be used. So those are some, some thoughts on that. Um, and then the handhelds, uh, you know, they may be a hundred and fifty bucks each, and we need to determine if the ones we have right now that we use amongst the, uh, staff are how well they're working, if they need to be upgraded, and if that, that whole system just needs to have, uh, ten more radios or something. So, so that's, that's something to start looking at there. And, and again, right now, our hope is that the one radios we do have will get us going and, and we'll do the exercises we need to do with the radios that we have. And, and as we communicate to the police and fire, um, on these bands that we have currently.
So I'm wondering, um, you know, as we upgrade these radios, if it doesn't work with the current ones, are the stakes willing to chip in?
So, so we will, again, we have a meeting on the thirteenth, uh, tomorrow.
Thursday morning.
Oh, Thursday, yeah, thirteenth. Um, and, uh, and that is our focus. Communication is the focus. And they are, uh, once we get settled in on the method of communication, then they will be the ones.
To outfit their.
Outfitting their, uh, their areas.
Perfect. Thank you.
I like it, Lon. Nice.
Anything else, Lon?
That's it.
Okay. I think with that, um, should we move on to the consent calendar? Unless Shane, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So, um, do I have a motion to approve the, well, are there any questions on the consent calendar? I believe there were some corrections that were submitted. Are there above and beyond that? Because if there's no further comment, I will take a motion to, for the approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make a motion, um, based on the, um, changes submitted by Greg Gordon and myself. And also then, uh, Jason Thielen, you've got those, um, to the minutes. I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as noted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Lot.
Yes.
Jessica Smooney, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Greg Gordon, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. And we have, is Shelley Cox Snar here? Do you want to come on up? I believe we have a three-minute, um, time limit. So if you can come up, introduce yourself, um, and your address. And then we have a timer.
Is it in front of me? Oh, there it is. My name is Shelley Cox Snar. My address is one, three, four, one, three Grove Drive, Alpine, Utah. I was here, I think, your last meeting, talked about vacancy and also about the new road. And I have heard about the new construction of Grove Drive because that, that empties right into my driveway. I don't know if you can bring it up or understand what I'm talking about. I'm wondering, I know.
Can you bring up a map? Can you Google map through the county?
When we stop the timer wave. I don't know how much it would take to bring it down past my U-shaped driveway. But I, my biggest concern the whole time I've lived there is people come around the corner and they slide into the, my driveway. They slide into my mailboxes. They've knocked them down six times. My pillars have been knocked down. And I don't know if this is gonna help that. I don't know what kind of grade that is. And on the, there's some lines coming off the road. Is that, because it's gonna be elevated? You want me to bring it to you?
Can I look at that real quick? I think that's the, the realignment of that, these lines right here, or, or these, these contour lines.
It's not elevated.
So, so that is, that represents a, uh, let me see in this case. That looks like, it's a little bit of a cut there. So it's, the road would be going down on the new intersection.
What's gonna happen to the area that's not going to be used anymore aesthetically?
Take it out and just kind of reclaim it and plant, just native grass, yeah.
Um, are you concerned for me at all, for my driveway?
We feel like this is a much safer design. We feel like this is a much safer design than what's up there right now.
What if it doesn't take care of the problem?
Of what problem?
Sliding into my yard and taking out my mailbox and my pillar.
I mean, in any case, any road, even a straight shot, there's that possibility of those things happening, just depending on driver behavior and, and everything. So, I mean, there's no guarantees that they're not going to slide into your property, just like they're on right now.
Well, that's, I thought that was a whole, one of the purposes of refiguring that for safety.
Yeah, safety coming across the culvert and, and just in general. I think overall, it's, it's better.
Okay. I, I hope so. Do I have any, um, re- any, I can't figure it, I can't bring up the word, but any recourse, I guess.
Can we put a stop sign on any of those 200 set of streets to slow that traffic?
There will be, let's see. The final, so we reviewed the 90% set of plans. I don't think they had the, the traffic signs on there. But that was one of our comments to get striping and signage for the final plans that we could review. I'm sure there will be some traffic signs up there.
Maybe this is something that we can take offline and you can talk with staff about this?
All right. My other question, I was very, um, I was in contact with Wayne Hederhelfer, who was appointed by Governor Cox. Uh, cause he's the Utah State Homeless Coordinator. And I was concerned about the new vagrants that are not going to be here. And I called, he, he has a structure a lot like Pamela Atkins and At- yeah, Atkins did. Uh, she's a semi-retired.
But he would be willing to come and talk to you and let you know what he thinks needs to happen to keep the city safe, keep the vagrants getting to the resource areas that they need to be instead of, you know, stopping on the corners and maybe bringing more elements in that we don't want. And I just wondered if you were interested in that information.
Did you want to handle this one?
Sorry, we have another flooding problem. I was looking at a text here. The house apparently came out of its bank somewhere in the ridge, said the vision.
It did?
Yeah.
This morning it was flowing, but it wasn't anywhere near over the banks.
So could we look at that and see if that might be a fit? We don't know, cause we need more information on what she's talking about.
Well, um, you know, for me, definition of vagrants are homeless people. The people that are coming into our city right now, I don't feel like they're truly homeless. We have looked and we have spoken with our legal and, um, the state statute, our issue is we can't, it's, they're kind of protected under the freedom of speech. Is, am I understanding this correctly, that we can, um, control to an extent if the speed limit is above 35 miles an hour? Which we don't really, we only have in a couple of places and it seems like they've kind of picked places. They picked one place in Alpine City where it's a four-way stop. It's less than 35 miles an hour. I'm not really willing to raise our speed limit in our city. So it's, we do have to work within the state laws.
And he certainly does too. He's just, he's, I think his point would be to educate the people and maybe put up signs, you know? It's better not to be handing out money and food and all that and give to resource centers.
Right, no. And that was, I don't know if you read that in my news line for, was it January where it talked about, you know, instead of doing that, you know, donate to Tap It This Way, which actually helps with residents. But thank you for your comments. Um, I'm sorry, apparently they've been trying to, your time's been up, but we really appreciate it. We could, if you want to reach out to one of the city council people, have them follow up on that. That would be great. Thank you. Okay. And then we've got, next item is the financial reports.
Sure. I texted back. I haven't heard yet.
So I don't know, Shane, do you need, are you okay? Do you need to go and take care of this?
I sent a text back. I'm just waiting for a reply here.
So financial reports.
Okay, for our financial report, we're nine, nine months through our budget year. If you look at the revenue section of our financial report, um, you know, we're hitting our marks overall. Nine months through the year, or 75%, we're at 87% of our, our anticipated revenue. Part of that is, uh, property taxes. We're at, uh, 99, just over 99%. Redemption taxes, we've collected a little more than we anticipated. But then our franchise fees and, and sales tax, there's a lag on that, but it looks like everything's on track to meet our, our budgeted revenue. Uh, on the expense side of things, um, there's no real, there's no real major red flags on here. Um, there's some numbers that are low because of projects not complete yet. But I, I feel good about where we're at on the budget. We're up a little bit on sales tax from last year. It flattened some, like we mentioned the last couple of months. But, you know, overall, things look really good. So.
Are there any questions regarding the financial reports? If there are no further questions, we'll move on to action discussion items. Um, item six on the agenda, item eight, ordinance 2023-11. Is that Ryan or is it?
I'll, I'll take this one. So, so leading up to, um, the next agenda item, uh, this primetime committee, we were reviewing our, uh, the ordinance that was passed to create citizen committees. And, um, I sent some information to Steve. Um, he reviewed it and had some recommendations to improve and clarify our, our base ord- I'll just call it our base ordinance for creating committees. And then looking at some of our other committees, we've been a little bit inconsistent. We had the Main Street Committee that was adopted or created by ordinance. It probably should have been by resolution. Some of the others were done by resolution. So we're trying to get everything standardized. So I don't know if you want to mention any of those edits, Steve, that you felt?
Yeah, they're not, they're not redlined in your packet, but the principal edits were, um, we're going to be consistent in calling these citizen advisory committees. Sometimes they're known as boards or they're something else. But we had language kind of all over the place on that. So we went with citizen advisory committee in each case. And then we, um, we, um, made it possible to establish a committee by resolution instead of by ordinance. Didn't make sense to have our code contained, except for like the planning commission. We don't need to have our code full of different rules and regulations for each citizen advisory committee. So I think that's the major item. And then also in 3.24.030, we added, uh, that the mayor can appoint or shall appoint a successor to complete the term of a departing member if somebody resigns or is, uh, their, their term. You know, before their term is up, they're, they're, for some reason can't, um, continue to. Oh, I will add one thing. Uh, this is something you should consider. Members may be removed by the mayor without cause. I think previously it said with cause. And that's, that's up to you as a council to decide whether you want that or not. It's a little harder to establish cause. In a particular situation, this gives the mayor more flexibility, but also somebody wants to serve, may be disappointed if they're removed without cause. So up to you.
So this resolution says without cause. Did you make that edit? Okay.
Yes.
So could, I mean, in theory, it's not, not this mayor, but let's say another one down the road. The council could put a, approve, uh, a committee and vote on it and put a committee in. And the mayor could just one by one say, oh, you're off. I'm going to put who I want on. You're off. I want to put who I want on. That could happen in this instance with the.
Well, what happens is that the mayor does that anyway. When the mayor established, when the council establishes a committee by resolution, the mayor nominates the members and so the, with the advice and consent of the council. So if the mayor deport, um, and maybe we want to say, be more explicit about it and just add the language that says the mayor shall appoint a successor. We can say with the advice and consent of council.
Yeah. I think that's a good, that's a good way to do it.
So I, yeah, I just noticed that language is missing, but in either way, the, the council gives advice and consent, either for the initial appointment or the replacement.
Should it be said in there then?
Yes. So we would just add that.
Motion to add that. Are there any further questions? If not, I would entertain a motion with the edit that we just discussed with Mr. Doxy. So the third one to approve with conditions.
Fine. I'll move, I move to approve ordinance number 202311, amending chapter 3.24 of the municipal code for the establishment of citizen committees with the following conditions that we add. The mayor can appoint with advice and consent of city council.
Appoint and remove.
Well, removes in there.
Well, this gives, this gives the mayor the option, option to remove without the advice and consent. But to appoint a replacement would be, and actually, if you looked at, at the previous section, 3.24.20, I think it's implicit that any appointment would be with the advice and consent, whether it's an initial appointment or a replacement. But we can add that language just for clarity.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Still a little confused. So on the removal, is that included with advice?
No.
So just the appointment?
I don't know how I feel about that, honestly.
We don't want to have consent?
No, I feel like we do need to add consent to both appointing and removal.
But the, if you have to remove someone, do you want to make it a council vote? I mean, it's, it's going to be a little sensitive in that situation.
I've been trying to put myself in that situation. I'm just, I, yeah, I can't imagine myself doing it, but you know, anybody could be in this position in the future and just, like you said, I, you know, I don't know. That's a tough one. Um, so it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? If not, we'll go ahead with the roll call vote from Councilman Lon Lot.
Uh, Lon Lot, yes.
Jessica Smuan, yes.
Kelly Law, yes. Greg Gordon, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Okay. Motion passes up for ordinance 2023-11. And we will move on to item B, resolution 2023-10, establishment of our new primetime citizen advisory committee.
Yes. So now that, uh, committee is established, the next, uh, step is to place people or appoint people to the committee. So, uh, the petitioner actually says city staff. It should be the mayor. My apologies for that. I wrote this. So the mayor has brought forward, uh, five names, uh, people, uh, to be on this committee, much like the other committees that we've, uh, that we've created in last year or so. Though these people would have three-year terms, but starting out, uh, we do stagger terms so that, uh, there's some continuity on that committee and that everyone's not being replaced in the same year or reappoint, appointed if that is the case. So.
I think we skipped over 10, right?
The committee first and the.
Yeah. Oh, we're one ahead there.
Sorry.
The actual, we need to create.
Two pages back.
Establish the primetime committee.
Yes. Sorry, I skipped to the next agenda item. So now that the, uh, base ordinance is in place, we've made some corrections and some improvements there, then create this committee.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt resolution R 2023-10, establishment of a primetime committee.
Second. Okay. Any discussion or questions?
So can we review one more time the, this committee? I read senior citizen lunch. Is there anything else that there? What else does this committee do?
So this committee is just emerging and so they're going to do just a multiple of things that will support our senior citizens everywhere from, service projects to learning, to exercise, to just connecting socially, anything we can do to help them have, you know, enjoy their last 20 years of life.
Awesome.
Yeah.
There's a feedback function, right?
Meaning.
And, you know, advice to council. That's in the resolution, right?
So, yeah, I mean, we just see this as we're going to start adding in activities and kind of see what turnout we get and, and what the requests are of the community.
Yeah. There was city council to receive valuable input from the city's senior residents and focus appropriate attention on matters of specific concern to them. So.
Okay. Any other discussions? If not, we'll proceed with the roll call vote from Councilman Lon Lot.
Lon Lot, yes.
Jessica Smuan, yes.
Kelly Law, yes. Greg Gordon, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Okay. With that, we will go to our next.
Now what I said.
On the next, on the agenda for resolution 2023 dash, wait, they're both numbered the same.
No.
Oh, one was an ordinance. Okay, I'm sorry. Dash 11.
11 is this next one.
Yes, for the resolution. Is that you also?
I, I can repeat what I said if you want to.
So you got, okay, so the names are Alice Osborne, um, so Alice is here with us and Jan Vincent, Bethany Sorensen just barely left. She was here earlier. Melissa Wood and Markei Funk are the five names that are going to be presented for this committee. If you guys, um, have any questions or discussions, we can talk about it. If not, um, we can proceed with a motion.
So just, just, uh, each of these individuals have been visited with by you, Mayor, or Jessica, who?
No, Jessica.
Jessica.
And they're, they're all extremely passionate and what the, what's unique about them all is they all have an incredible skillset that's differing from each other and very passionate about this age group and growing this, this community.
Alice and Jan, um, Alice Osborne and Jan Vincent are the ones who co-did basically all the food for the Christmas dinner. They organized it, got volunteers. They did like an amazing job. It was like watching Whirling Durbushes and it just was beautiful. Um, I.
That's Alice right there.
Yes, that's Alice. And then Bethany Sorensen just, um, I didn't know her, actually, I didn't know most of these people before. Um, I met Bethany Sorensen during a service, um, what would you call it?
Service day.
A service day at the Alpine State that they were holding and brought all these, um, different groups together for different ways to serve within the community. Um, and then, you know, Jessica talked to her more. Mine was just very superficial. I don't know Melissa, but I'm assuming she's great. And then I've known Markei Funk for years and I just, I'm like, you're, but apparently she's a registered nurse and is very passionate about getting people out and, um, helping them.
Who will be training them on the protocol then that we, who, these committees have to have as far as public notice and things like that?
Our co-chairs. Well, uh, we'll, we'll let them know that exactly how they have to be noticed in the, the meetings and then the co-chairs will make sure they follow those guidelines.
Jessica to the committee.
Yeah.
We sort of had committees stop doing things because of the Open and Public Meetings Act and that. But now we've, as these committees are up and going, we need to, it, um, get it out to the public that you're meeting and you're, you're discussing these things so that they know, the public knows that we're doing this. So, anyway.
And we can do some training on that with you. And, and just reminder on, uh, like the last item in our base ordinance, it says each committee shall formulate its own rules for the selection of the chair and vice chair. So once that committee, the people are appointed to the committee at their first meeting, they would take care of that.
Then they would reformalize that. Okay.
Okay. Great.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution R 2023-11, appointing Alice Osborne, Jan Vincent, Bethany Sorensen, Melissa Wood and Markei Funk to the primetime citizen advisory committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any questions or discussions? With no questions or discussions, um, let's proceed with the roll call vote, starting from Councilman Lot. With no questions or discussions, let's proceed with a roll call vote, starting from Councilman Lott.
Lon Lott, yes.
Jessica Smeeon, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Greg Gordon, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Okay, but resolution passes. Let's move on to item D, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, intent. Notice of intent for our parks, arts, recreation, and culture, or our park tax. As, as you guys know, this is a tax that we as residents of Alpine City are already paying. If we are purchasing anything outside of Alpine City, every time you go to Cedar Hills, Lehigh, American Fork, Provo, Orem, almost any city within North Utah County, actually, in most of Utah County, and all of Salt Lake County, you're already paying for this tax for other cities. So you're paying, and the way that this tax works is, you know, for every cent that they gather, the state collects half of that cent, and then the other half cent goes to the origin, where the sales originated, which would be, you know, if I go to Costco in Lehigh, half a cent will stay with Lehigh, whatever, you know, the tax excises, and the other half goes to the state. And it is redistributed, kind of like with the way sales taxes, to the cities based on your population. So so far, we are getting data back from the Utah State Tax Commission that we have missed out, like last year, it was a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, and that amount will probably only go up as prices increase. So we as residents, because we have not opted for this park tax, we're missing out on revenue that we can spend on our parks, arts, recreation, or culture, which part of it can go for these programs that Councilman Smeeon is talking about. So.
Mayor, it's a state pool, right? Not a county.
I'm sorry, no, it's a state pool, not a county. So it's based on population, and because of that, we're missing out on that money. So we would like to be able to opt in and capitalize on that so that it can go towards updating and upgrading our resources.
We could put a little bit into the relic, you know, the relic museum. We've got some cultural assets that need attention.
Yeah.
Somebody talked about a zoo. We are not doing a zoo. It's not gonna go towards a zoo.
But we could if we ever wanted to.
Yeah, no, I, I think I could pretty safely say we will never have a zoo.
Was it Ryan that talked about a zoo?
I think it was. How much does an elephant cost?
What?
How much is an elephant?
Doesn't matter. So that's what the basis is. Do you guys have any questions on that and as far as pro, con?
No, I think, you know, about ninety percent of, you know, Utahns live in a city that's already collecting this.
And where our residents are already paying. So we're paying for improvements on everybody else's parks, arts, and recreation and culture. In all these cities that we go to, every time you pick up gas, unless it's at the junction, you know, you're paying for other cities to improve. But we're not benefiting from the other half a cent for every ten dollars that you spend. So it's, to me, it's, it would just be almost foolish for us not to opt in, since number one, we're already paying, but we're getting none of the benefits for it whatsoever, so.
So Mayor, there's the traditional ballot and it has arguments for and against. Can this, the, the city send a separate informational?
Yes, as long as it's neutral. It has to be the same thing. It has to be, whatever the city does, it has to be neutral. Residents can do whatever they want, obviously, but yes, there's a procedure that we have to follow. But yes, most of the flyers that I've seen from what I remember last year and the years before, it's, it's basically what it is, it explains what it is, and then there's usually positions for and against.
Do council members have to remain neutral?
No.
Like if we had a cottage meeting or something and I was?
No, if they ask your opinion, you can let them know.
Yeah, okay.
No, 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 it's just we, if we publish anything as a city, if, if we publish anything as a city, but I feel like, yeah.
Well, it does, I think when Highland's last election, as a matter of fact, some of their candidates were running on support of that. I mean, that was part of their strong platform, so.
Yeah, I was surprised that we're one of the few, but I think the idea is, oh my gosh, it's a tax. When I realized what that tax was that we're already paying, but because we haven't opted in, we're missing out on over a hundred thousand dollars in revenue every year.
But the only question is, the only difference is, we're not paying the tax, or correct me if I'm wrong, we're not paying the tax at Daylight Donuts over here because we don't have one percent in Alpine. But we are paying the tax when we go over to Cedar Hills and Walmart.
Yes.
So the difference is, we are gonna increase our tax within the city. Of that, there's not very much of it. Most of our sales tax comes from outside of the city, so that's why we're gonna be ahead of the game.
Yep. So yeah, you will see an increase at the junction. What is it?
One penny for every ten dollars.
One cent for every ten dollars you spend, you will see an increase at the junction.
You can almost pick that penny up in the parking lot before you go in.
That's true, and just, you know.
That's true.
So that's what we're looking at. Do you guys have any questions or just want to discuss further on this?
And this is just the notice of intent?
Yes.
So we'll still send it to the county, they'll have to say they're not gonna do it, and then we can move forward. So this will still go on the ballot, we're not deciding anything.
Yeah, so that's what we're doing, is that it's, we have a process that we need to follow from the county and from the state. So this is just the first step. So it will, you know, if we go through the process, it'll eventually be on the ballot in November.
And Ryan, maybe you could send that video link out for American Fork City?
Yeah.
So they're, is it ten years or they?
Yeah, so every ten years after he knew this, so American Forks, it's their ten year. I can't, who's the council member they had do that?
It's, it's actually my wife's brother-in-law. His name's Thark Taylor. He, he does marketing for a living. He did this video for American Fork Cities on the council. Just explaining what they had done with the money that was generated from their park tax, and it's, it's neutral, but it's a very good.
Just explains, yeah. Watch it and we'll take volunteers to who wants to recreate it for an Alpine version, but you have to watch it.
Can we just Photoshop Carla's head on their head?
If he sounds like the guy in the JCW's commercial, he is.
So can I get a motion for the resolution?
Can I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, indicating the city's intent to proceed with the park tax process as proposed with one change on the last whereas, that the word be, rap be changed to park.
Thank you for catching that.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussions? Ryan, did you capture that?
Yeah, we've, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, it's in several areas, right? Yeah.
Did you see it in other places?
Yeah, it's, well, it's in all the whereas.
Yeah, we're, we're going from rap to park.
So yeah, we'll have to do, it says on the first whereas, it's, and the second, third, fourth, no, 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 okay, you're right, it's only the last, okay.
Yeah, we want park. Park's the new term, so.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? If not, we'll move with the roll call vote, starting from Councilman Lott.
Lon Lott, yes.
Jessica Smeeon, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Greg Gordon, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to staff reports. Chiefs? Chief Patton? Bonnie? Heidi? Ryan?
Yeah, unfortunately, I have a couple. The state changed their noticing requirements for the moderate income housing reports. They now open May first and they're due August first. So we have to show what progress we've made on the goals that we, that we enacted last year. Good, let me, good landlord program. ADUs, internal ADUs, we've done that, and then enact a good landlord program, reduce waiver, eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. So we're working on all those to get that into the state by August first to do that. And they've, they've got some new punishments out if you don't meet those, but those are for the next year, so we'll keep working on that. If you have any questions on those, I think the big one's gonna be that good landlord program, just getting that started and, and how that'll work with the rest, or we've already done.
And the punishment is that we wouldn't be able to collect on the fifth fifth, right? Which Utah County currently has not approved.
Yeah, and then in, I think it's February of twenty-four, we can start having a fee assessed against the city. It's like fifty dollars or, I don't know, but there's a fee that, that you have to, to the Olean Walker Housing Fund that you'll pay, but there's, there's a whole process now that they've, they've come up with to do that. So we'll be working on that. Again, like I said, the big one's that, the good landlord program. We had a few of you guys reach out to us recently about roosters, complaints you've got about them and, and just chickens in general and the havoc they're wreaking on the city. Right now, our code doesn't address roosters or chickens at all. Wanted to reach out and, and kind of get the feedback of the city council and see if.
We don't have anything on chickens? I thought we did.
So we have one for like cows and horses and pigs and how many you can have per lot size and stuff, but there's nothing on chickens.
I recall roosters was debated a few years ago and they didn't take action.
I think because you have that, that language that talks about a nuisance, that even though it's not specific to that animal, there is a way to have it. Yeah, so I remember when we had the discussion, it just again fell back into, let's try to just model being a good neighbor and not try to legislate being a good neighbor and see if we can, I would like to just continue along that. I don't know how you guys feel.
Sure. So I had, you know, I know of a neighbor who had a rooster and neighbor let him know that it was an issue and gone in hours, right? And I think that's kind of how it's gone.
Anything else, Ryan?
Yeah, sorry. Incident command training is on Thursday from noon to two, I think we had it on there. We will be providing lunch. I need to know who's gonna be there from the city council so we can know if we need to notice it or not as a, a public meeting.
Is it here?
Yeah, we'll just have it here. So if we get more than three or more of you, we have to notice as a public meeting, which is a big deal.
What date is this again, Ryan?
Thursday, the thirteenth.
At noon, right?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I will try to, I should make it.
We can just notice it if anyone else wants to come, but yeah, if you, if you change your mind, let us know.
To that?
I can't promise we'll have Cafe Rio, but you know. Yeah, yeah.
You get dirt.
And we are going to record it. It'll be on YouTube, so if you want to go back and watch it later, you can.
Oh, okay, cool.
So it looks like maybe everybody but Jason. Jason, will you be there?
I was just asking Greg why we're doing it. Incident, so we can, so you can be.
So yeah, let me go over that a little bit then. As we've been working on in incident management or the emergency management plan, we're almost finished with that. The county has been working with us and getting that together. And, and as we have an incident, as we've seen in the past, it's important to know who, who, who does what and who reports to who and how that works. From the, from the north end of the city to the south end of the city and, and, and we have, we share police and fire with Highland. And so this is just a way to help everyone know how incident management works and, and who is involved in that process.
How much of them, in my garage right now, I have one of those big boards that's, if someone has a broken neck, you stick them on them, you bring them out. I also have one of those really long things to turn off, to turn off gas stuff, because every ward in this whole area has an emergency response team.
I don't know that it is that. I think it's more, they're talking top, top down with this, just the upper management of.
It's more generic.
More generic. I won't, I don't think I'll be there, but.
Again, it'll, it'll be recorded on YouTube, so if you can't sleep at night or something, you can. Yeah.
So it looks like everybody but Jason.
We'll just go ahead and notice it, yeah, yep. Thanks.
Thanks for pointing that out, Mayor.
No, I'm just kidding. Okay, anything else, Ryan?
That's Bonnie's gonna put that whole thing in the minutes.
As was mentioned, the conservation easement was submitted to the county last week, and we expect to hear back from them sometime about any comments or questions that they may have. I appreciate very much the work of the preservation committee and especially Councilmember Gordon and staff gave valuable input as well as the mayor, so we tried to incorporate all of the comments that we received.
Steve's done a great job on it. It, it was turned around quicker than I expected, so it was, it was good, so.
Did you hear back about the secondary flooding?
Schoolhouse came out of the bank somewhere up, came down, so I think it's gotta be in the area of that new connection to Alpine Cove in the ridge. Somewhere right in there and it came down and it's down to Catherine Way, which is kind of the west road going from the old ninety-degree bend, if I can describe it that way. Yeah, it's not, I don't think it's causing any homes issues right now, but. So you're, my turn? Okay, so we, through text, discussed, I sent a text out to our, our trying to remember the committee name, or basically our press irrigation committee, which is made up of three members from the city and three from the irrigation company. Greg, myself, and Greg Kmitch, and then Will, Roger, and Kobe Brrell from the irrigation company. We're supposed to meet prior to the irrigation season, determine when to start water. When I sent that out, we were still having twenty-degree temperatures in the mornings and it was snowing every day and just really couldn't see the light at the end of the tunnel for the need for irrigation water. Anyway, we made the decision not to have the water operational by April fifteenth, and then we would just kind of play it by ear on the weather. We haven't, I haven't sent a text out yet. I just got with Greg this afternoon. What we're going to propose is that we probably have the system operational by like a week from Friday. So like the twenty-first, twenty-second, right in that timeframe. So only about a week later than normal. We were concerned about fittings freezing and different things that could cause us problems all over the city and who needs water when it's snowing anyway? I really don't think anybody's probably needs water by then, but, but anyway, we'll get that happening. I, Greg said he saw sprinklers going in Highland in a park strip today. So who knows? So that's kind of the tentative schedule on that. Just an update on kind of flood preparation and flooding. We have been working with several different wards that have done a great job hel- helping us clean up some of the channels and things. You know, like I said, we've delivered bins and a whole awful lot of material that they've helped clean up. And then in talking to Landon late today, I think we've hauled in about fifteen loads of sand, and there's a lot of people filling sandbags. And they're, they seem very grateful, you know, that we're providing that to them, and so we'll continue to do that. If we have some kind of key locations, if some group has like a big project in an area, instead of making them come clear to the shop, we've worked with them to get sand closer to that project. Yeah, so we didn't fill those. We provided the sand and the sandbags and their group went up and filled them and, and have them, them ready, so. Guy we, that was having some issues today, he'd already called the sandbag company and I, I told him, we have sand, we have sandbags. We had it, they're quicker than they did, and he had twelve people show up and they just got the problem addressed, at least for today, so. Some minor things, I, Jed and I drove around this morning and looked at all the spots that I felt like we should look at. This was probably mid-morning. Everything was going well then, and then things heated up this afternoon and I started running more. So we'll just keep a close eye on everything and starting Thursday, we'll be cleaning out the debris basin in Box Elder. So we'll have a couple of large haul trucks hauling for probably two days. The best option we have right now for that material is just to take it over below the upper press irrigation reservoir. And then my hope is that we can use some of that material when we do the grow. when we do the Grove Drive project and not have to buy that material. So, um, should work.
What is it, uh, one inch minus?
Uh, a little bigger. Yeah, it's like a, a good bankroll material. Yeah, so, um.
Have they, uh, has the overflow area, the ravine been dug out by that homeowner? Yeah?
Uh, we just got the report last Thursday or Friday from the engineer he's been working with and there's been a little bit of back and forth between he and Jed. And, um, as soon as we say, yeah, it's acceptable to the city and the engineer on his side, um, agrees, then he'll get things lined out there. So, but there's no water in Box Elder. I didn't go up to the mouth of the canyon. A lot of times there'll be a little bit of water up there, but then it just goes in the ground. But there's nothing down at the crossing at all. It's bone dry. So. You look up on the mountain, there's a lot of avalanches that have happened up there too. It's kind of crazy. And that snow looks very dense and shiny and, I don't know, it's going to take a while for it to melt off.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of slides up there, a lot of slides.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't go up there if anyone, so. Okay, um, I think that's all I have tonight.
Jessica?
Thought if it was a budget or just needs to be done. The bells. Is it time to have our bells back? I know that's on the to-do list, but.
So, no, 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 I just got additional donations, um, that is dedicated to having the bells installed by the company. So we're, we've reached out, so we're trying to get scheduling, so they, it should get done, so.
Well, that was nice of the donors. Tell them, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Um, my main thing was, um, the commissioners approached, um, the mayors on what, in Utah County, what we thought about the fifth fifth because we're one of the only counties that has not opted in yet. Um, so if you guys have, um, the fifth fifth tax, so it used to be the fourth tax or whatever. Basically, it's a fifth of a cent on a sales tax, but not food. That is supposed to go towards transportation. But the last iteration of the bill that passed in the House, not in the House, during the legislative session is that the advantage to, um, Alpine is that usually when it, before it was, uh, it was proposed a hundred percent go to transportation and so it would go to somebody like MAG and UTA and usually we didn't really benefit from it except for our one section of, um, Alpine Highway that comes into Alpine for a very short section. Um, so the monies were going in other places, but they're saying that, um, what is it, Point oh five is going to go toward, to the cities. So we get a direct benefit. I don't know if you knew that that was the last thing. Um, so I just was wanting to, you know, and we don't have to talk about it tonight, but if you guys can reach out to me, if you feel strongly one way or the other, so I can give a position on where, you know, Alpine stands, let me know. So that is also where, um, the clawback is on the affordable housing is that, that you wouldn't get your portion of the funds for the fifth fifth if you're not in compliance. And that's why I said, well, right now, we haven't even opted in, but it sounds like there's other punitive damages too, but, um, or fees. So if you guys, um, feel either way, let me know within the next week.
So this is an optional county tax?
Correct. And so they just want to know, you know, if the city supported and if it's something that they want to put on the ballot, um, this coming session or if it's not something that we're not going to do. So they just, they have no idea where the cities stand. And so I wanted to get your input.
Would participate then? So would it be the same thing that if we say we don't want to opt in, we'd still be paying it everywhere else?
No, it's the county. Yeah, no, it's a county, whether you, no, far, far as I understand, it's on a county level. And I don't know if it's just the commissioners that approve it or if it's going to be on the ballot. And I think they get to decide. So. I'm good. Kelly?
You're good.
Ryan, I, we can turn, we should turn Main Street into a mule deer zoo. We can just designate it. It already is. So technically, we have a zoo all ready.
Next. Okay, next. Greg, Jason? Okay, oh, you know what? I do have one comment. I do want to say I've had a lot of people call and, um, just mentioned what an amazing job our public works guys have done with snowplowing this year. Keep in mind that, you know, they had to work Christmas Day, most holidays throughout the winter because as you all know, we've had snow, uh, you know, almost every day. They're getting up five AM or earlier and getting started. Um, just wanted to publicly just say, you know, the city really does acknowledge and appreciate everything that they've done this winter. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?